Hello, I'm Debbie Kay, Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Portland. The League is a nonpartisan organization that works to help citizens make informed choices in elections. We do not endorse any candidate or political party, but rather we give voters the information they need to select a candidate. Membership information is available on our website and at the table at the entry. We thank the Carol and Velma Sailing Foundation, the Rose E. Tucker Charitable Trust, the Multnomah Bar Foundation, and Metro East Community Media, as well as Paloma Clothing, for their generous contributions to our education fund to make these forums possible. Today's forum is being recorded by our partner, Metro East Community Media. This forum will be available for on-demand viewing from a link on our website, l w v p d x dot org, and from the website of Metro East Community Media, metroeast.org. To view the forums on local access cable television, see the playback schedule posted on our website or in your program this evening. The deadline to register to vote was yesterday, but you can still verify your registration or change your address or political party. See a volunteer at the door for some help with that, or even better, contact your county elections office, or search online. You can find the online link at our website. Ballot mailing began today. You should receive yours soon. I will now turn the forum over to our moderator, Linda Mather.
Thanks, Debbie. Hello and welcome to this forum for candidates for Multnomah County Commissioners, District One. I'm your moderator, Linda Mather, from the League of Women Voters of Portland. The League of Women Voters has invited all the candidates running for this office. Present today, and seated at my left, in the order in which they will appear on the ballot are Eric Zimmerman, Mel Rader, Marisha Childs, Wes Soderback, and Sharon Myron. Okay, welcome to you all. Each of the candidates will get a two-minute opening statement, followed by questions that have been prepared. Each candidate will then have a minute and a half to answer each of the questions that are presented. Our volunteer timekeepers are up there, and they will signal a five-second, oh, sorry, not that bad, 15-second warning, and then a stop when your time has elapsed. The order in which we select candidates to answer is random, except that we've ensured that as many as possible are able to answer first as well as last. Following our prepared questions, we will have questions from the audience. Finally, candidates will give a one-minute closing. So those of you in the audience who do have questions, please signal for a file card. Now, we turn to our opening statements. Each candidate again will have two minutes to introduce themselves and their platform. They will do it in ballot order. Therefore, Mr. Zimmerman, you are first.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the time, Linda, and coming out here. My name is Eric Zimmerman, and I'm running for this position. I think that there are issues facing our community, particularly affordability. And the affordability issues are things that I think are affecting every age demographic within our community, and I think that the county has to play a role in stemming the increase of housing prices and of rental prices. I also think that we have to be a major player in our sheltering of our homeless. I think that our inventory of sheltering for homeless is something that's got to be key and primary for the county's role, and allow the city to continue to focus on housing. And let us start to focus on getting our homeless directed into the services that they need, to start finding a way into a more stable home and to services that they're much needed. I also work on a lot of the safe and sustainable infrastructure projects that we have at the county, including the downtown courthouse, the health department in Old Town Chinatown, and in East County, the new public safety building. These are important projects that we haven't yet broken ground on, but have a lot of money from other agencies, so that we're relying on state and city money, so that we can bring the proper infrastructure that I think taxpayers rely on us to do. And I think that I have the experience and the leadership to be the person to bring these projects to the county. I started working at the county in 2007, when I returned from the Iraq War, after leading troops there, I worked on veterans' issues and looking at employment and mental health care, and how we can do it better at the county, both for our employees as well as our community. And today, I serve as a senior leader at the county as the Chief of Staff to the Commissioner Diane McKeel in District Four. And I think that that experience allows me, above other candidates in this race, to really hit the ground running on what I think are really important projects, and not a time for us to take a pause. And it's certainly something we need to see results on day one, and I think I'm the right candidate to do that. So, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Rader.
Thank you. My name's Mel Rader, proud to be running for Multnomah County, District One. I'm a community leader, nonprofit leader. I'm the Director of Upstream Public Health, which has worked on public health and equity issues. Been there for 10 years. I'm also on the Board of Health Share, which serves 230,000 low-income Medicaid members and provides critical health services. I've been a champion on policies and programs like farm-to-school programs that bring state dollars for schools to buy local foods. Advocated for paid sick leave, helped to expand healthcare for children. I have a strong set of progressive values and believe we need to create more economic opportunities for low-income families. We need to promote more health equity and address disparities within our communities. And we need to have strong values around environmental conservation for the county. On housing, I think the county can do more, can be bolder, and I think we should be looking at implementing a requirement that big developers have at least 20% of housing be affordable. I think we need a housing-first policy. We need to say, we need to really invest the dollars on the front end, so that we can get chronically homeless off the streets and in stable housing. And it's much less expensive when we invest on the front end compared to the way we're doing it now, where we're spending money and we're losing money in jails, in mental health programs, in emergency rooms. And I think we can do better. I think the county can be a leader in addressing air quality. These issues have not been addressed at the state. The county is the authority around health and should take a leading role in making sure we have air quality standards that protect our public health. And then, finally, I hope the county can be a leader in addressing a healthy, sustainable food system and form a new food policy council.
Thank you. Ms. Childs?
Thank you. My name's Marisha Childs, and I'm running for Multnomah County Commissioner, District One, as well. And unlike one of the Eric Zimmerman had said that he doesn't believe that it's a time to pause for any transition, I disagree. I think it is time to pause, and particularly, it's time to pause if your voice has not been heard. I'm running for county commissioner because I have lived in Multnomah County for 30-plus years. I grew up out here in East Multnomah County. And one of the things that I have known, that I see, that has stayed consistent over those 30 years, is the inequities that we see across our community. And so I'm running because it's not just me who needs a voice at the table, but there's many other underrepresented communities that are not having a voice at the table in the conversations for things that impact them. Equity is at the core of so many things that affect our community. We see equity in the jails or inequity. We see it with homelessness, you know, and we provide housing for some, but then there is no culturally specific housing for others. I am a mom and I'm an attorney, and I work with the communities that the county directly serves. I work with seniors as well as juveniles, and in my work with seniors, I try to ensure that they can stay in their home and age safely and independently. One of the reasons that seniors choose to not seek services of the county is they fear, or even to acknowledge that perhaps there's a problem in their home, is they fear somebody will come in and tell them they have to get out of their home, or they're going to have to go to a care facility, and they won't be able to afford it. The county has a program, Gatekeepers, which I think we can strengthen to ensure that seniors can remain in their home safely and just receive some in-home care services, as well as in-home mental health care services. Also, when I work with juveniles, I want to make sure that juveniles in the juvenile justice system receive some sort of vocational training, and we put more funding, so that way they do not wind up in juvenile justice. Thank you.
Mr. Soderback?
Hi, I'm Wes Soderback. I grew up in the Portland area. My family's been there for about 100 years. The reason that I'm running is to be a voice for all those who aren't special interests. We all have our special interest in the county. The very extreme, you'll hear a lot of it in this forum, about helping the poor and homeless and this and that. Believe me, every election that comes around, it's the same thing. You know when they're champion, the bums on Burnside down in Portland, the election's coming. Soon as the election's over, this will all be forgotten, and it'll be back to business as usual. This particular charter sets up a chair as sort of a czar of the county, takes care of all the fiscal, day-to-day things, personnel officer, whatnot. But the commission, the forum on the commission, really don't have anything to do, except show up for meetings on Thursday, if they even hold one on Thursday. And the intention was to have a commission that would not get involved in all the intricacies of politics and government, but set policy for the county. So, anyway, that's why I'm running for the office. And by the way, I'm a Vietnam Vet, both in submarine service and merchant marine.
Thank you. Ms. Myron?
Hi. My name's Sharon Myron, and I am an ER doctor. I was a lawyer before going to medical school. I'm a mom of two kids that are at Portland Public Schools right now, and I'm running because of what I see every day working in the emergency department. Multnomah County is actually one of the largest public health care providers in the state, and yet, no one on the county commission has an experience or background in providing health care. Every day in the emergency department, I see what happens when we fail to intervene at multiple points in our system of care, and people fall through the cracks and end up in the place that is too often the most expensive and least effective place to deal with their underlying problems. So those problems are things like homelessness, mental health crises that haven't been taken care of, and so I see on a very direct and fundamental level why the county makes investments, it does, in things like housing and mental health care and long-term disability care. And I really get that these things, if they're done right, can get people on a better path and help keep them there. So, in the ER, I do a lot of work and hone my skills in triage. And, you know, the way that it works in the ER is it's a skill of using limited time and resources to achieve the best outcomes. And I think that's something that directly ties into running a budget at the county and making some of those hard decisions at the county. So, I will ask hard questions, I will make hard decisions, but always smart and thoughtful decisions, and ensure we use our limited dollars to effectively and truly help the most people.
Thank you. We turn now to our first question, and it's one of those lovely questions that you can answer in 90 seconds. I'll just tell you right off the bat. So, Mr. Rader, you're going to start us off with this, if you would. How will you address the connected issues of mental and physical health, substance abuse, and homelessness more effectively?
The connections, they are highly connected in that many people have both mental and physical health issues, and yet we have separate systems. Homelessness is one of the most key social determinants of health. If you don't have a house, it's very hard to live a healthy, productive life. And because of that, a house is a critical piece, just like access to food, just like social supports. These are the things that are requirements for us to live healthy lives. And that's why I'm supporting a homeless-first policy. First, let's look at the chronically homeless, and let's invest the resources to get them off the street, in stable housing, and let's connect services and social workers, mental health and addiction services to them. This has worked incredibly well in Denver, which has cut the chronically homeless rate by more than 70%, and saved money in the process. I think on mental health and addictions and physical health, we need to really focus on the primary care piece, and let's have a coordinated approach. Let's have a team approach, where primary care physicians work closely with mental health providers, addiction providers, so that we have a seamless system.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, so I think that we have a model that we can take and apply here in Multnomah County. We housed 695 veterans this last year, and we did that because we did the work on an individual basis, addressing individual issues. And what we have now are people who, we know where they're at, they're in a more stable situation, housing first, and we're able to start talking about the mental health care and the other parts of physical health that will achieve overall stability and also help with the homeless population. That's a model we should continue to recreate in the larger, broader spectrum of homelessness of people who are on our streets, because I think that individual solutions to get individuals into more stable housing is important. And one of the important ways that I think we can start doing that is dramatically increasing our shelter capacity, so that we start knowing where folks are at night overnight, and we can begin that relationship. Multnomah County has the social workers, has the service providers. Now we need to establish those relationships, so we can start moving folks into that pipeline that we know was successful for veterans in this community, and then we need to apply that to the broader community as a whole.
Okay. Ms. Myron?
Yes. So, the one thing you didn't include was the criminal justice system, too. It all is interconnected and ties together. So, and in the emergency department, I directly see how those interconnections play out, and I see how essential it is to first get people a roof over their heads. You can't get off drugs, you can't take care of mental or physical illness unless you have a safe place to be. That's necessary, but it's not sufficient. And so, in addition, so if you have the house, but you don't have the associated services, you're not going to be able to sustain your housing. If you have services but don't have a place to live, you're not going to be able to effectively get to your services and navigate that. So what we need for a number of people is supported housing, so that you have both the housing element, a safe place to live, and the supportive services that can get you to function meaningfully and support you. And a great model is Central City Concern. They've had a great impact. I could talk about that later.
Okay, good enough. Mr. Soderback?
Well, it seems like in our system, the best way to get mental health help is to stop by the police station, especially if you're escorted by the police officer. Despite all this programs and everything, that's the way it works. In my end of town, northwest, you know, we had the police killing citizens, and their only crime was that they were mentally ill. And our, this, another end of the mental illness, as our population is aging in leaps and bounds, we are getting more and more seniors with dementia, and we have absolutely no programs for them. If you have private insurance, you're on your own. But it seems to be you have to break a law, or you have to do something to get in the system.
Thank you. Ms. Childs?
So, you know, homelessness and addiction, mental health, all these things are, you know, very chicken and egg. You know, we can only imagine, if we all came from our homes, that we're feeling pretty stable, health-wise. However, imagine if you didn't have your home, if somebody just said that your rent's gone up by $600, or you no longer can afford your mortgage. It's no wonder that you would begin to experience some mental health issues. You'd be depressed, you'd be anxious, and people turn to a variety of crutches to deal with their stress and anxiety, and so then, you know, then we start seeing some other addiction issues. So, I absolutely support the idea of supported housing and having wraparound services when you're in the supported housing. That way, we can address everything to help you be, feel whole, and feel connected to your community, and achieve the goals that you seek. I think one of the challenges we experience in our community is we see people that are experiencing a mental health crisis on the street, and we call, someone calls 911, but that is, I mean, that's really not what you need. You don't need 911 if somebody's experiencing a mental health crisis. You need somebody who is trained in mental health services to come and help the person. So I think we really need to think about, who do we call, who do we want to be making those phone calls to when we see somebody in crisis? It shouldn't be 911. We need another, or if it is 911, we need to have like another avenue for those conversations to direct the proper care.
Thank you. We turn now to question number two, and Mr. Soderback, you're going to get us started with it, if you would. Estimates indicate that over 200,000 people will be added to the county over the next two decades. What is your vision for how the county can manage this growth?
Well, you've put it on the county, I suspect you mean, including all the cities in the county, everything in the county, not just the outlined areas of the county. Well, you know, the answer so far has been the pearl down northwest Portland, you know, throw up high-rise condominiums. You can't sell them, rent them, and that's my area of town. We got very high density down there. People are coming in from all over. Gee, that's great. I don't know what they do in the daytime down there. I see them wandering around on the street. None of them are poor, but this is not the Portland I grew up in, where high-rise was outlawed, and you had great open spaces, you could walk on the street. Now you got the high-rise, you got bums all over the street, panhandlers on every corner, which are protected by law, because that's their profession, and you can't stop them. So, my vision isn't great for the area. I think we're becoming more like New York City, for instance.
Mr. Rader?
I think our region is at a turning point. I think we're facing great challenges around affordability, around how our city is designed, around the great green space we have, around our artistic culture, and many of these things are threatened due to high prices, rents, and so on. And income inequality is part of the problem. It's also a fastly growing city and region. I think addressing affordability is critical, and I'm going to be perhaps the only candidate that's really going to speak out and say, we need the whole, big developers, out-of-state developers accountable, so that they are part of the solution, through policies like inclusionary zoning. I think we need to, we need to be smart about investing in the future city that we want to live in, in the future county we want to live in. We need to invest in transit, walking and biking, right now, so that we have the transportation options for a much larger city. We need to invest, identify and invest in our community assets, in our green spaces, in our community gardens, in our places for artistic culture, artistic expression, and community expression. I think it's a critical piece to, critical time, to create the vision of the city we want to live in, in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
I think it's important when you have 200,000 people coming to the county and to the community to, we have to unlock middle housing, workforce housing. The idea that garden apartments, townhomes, that these are options to increase density, but also to help with affordability, because those are stepping stone homes for some families, and for others, it's perfectly adequate housing. And right now, we're not doing a good job at that. Inclusionary zoning and how we implement that in our community is going to be key as we see an influx of new units, of new housing, but how do we make sure that that's affordable? So inclusionary zoning is one tool. The other piece of it is I think we have to be involved in inspiring family wage jobs and the development of those types of economies to come into our community, and make sure that they're worth our while to invest, that businesses come to our community who have family wage jobs, so that we can protect some of the affordability, and that folks can afford housing in this community. And in all that, I think you have to have an eye to protecting our recreation and green spaces, because we will have pressure by outside entities to develop areas that I think that the community holds very sacred and strong, as we have a strong outdoor culture. And it's important that we maintain those areas, because I think there are also a lot of our identity, and we don't want to be the city who grew by 200,000 persons, but then lost all of our parks and green areas as well. So I think these are things that we can manage together.
Thank you. Ms. Childs?
So, there's a lot of things that we, obviously, we need to consider if we were going to suddenly grow by 200,000. I think that's what was the number. So, housing, building housing that is both market rate and, as well as in the middle and low-income, because we, there will guarantee, there's always going to be people that can afford the very flashy condo that you see going up, although it may not be me, but there will be people that move here that can afford that housing. But that also means we need to ensure that people that are in the middle can still afford housing, people that are a little below the middle are able to. We need to make sure that we're building housing for all income levels while we're developing. It certainly does mean that we need to do a lot with our infrastructure. As more as we build out here in East Multnomah County, people still need to be able to access downtown, they need to be able to get to the center easily, and if it's taking you hours on the bus and you're traveling with a child, that's not, that's not really working. That's going to be very, very challenging. We also need to have a community that's age-friendly. That means our sidewalks need to be able to be accessed, not just by the walking ambulatory able-bodied individual, it needs to be able to be accessed by somebody who has a walker, somebody who's in a wheelchair, somebody who has a cane. So we need to be able to grow, but do it smartly. We need to be able to grow with our community and make sure that our community can grow safely here.
Thank you. Ms. Myron?
So, I believe that in looking at the vision, adding 200,000 people over 20 years, we need to still focus on the core mission of the county, and that's public health and human services, it's public safety. As we've talked about, what's fundamental to everything that we do, housing has to come first, and I think that right now, with Chair Kofori leading the effort on a home for everyone, that there is that vision, and the key will be partnering with the business community and developers, and the environmental community, and tenants' rights people, and all local governments, to ensure that people have a voice at the table and that we are collaborating, so that all of this is taken into account, like our environmental health, public health for this many new residents, et cetera, as we grow.
Okay, and here we go again with another question. Ms. Childs, you'll start us off. When funding social services, how does the county equitably address the geographic distribution of people experiencing poverty?
Well, I think the county is certainly trying to get better at how it is geographically representing the community, but, you know, right now, I think we see it more in East Multnomah, in East Multnomah County, like in the Jade District, we see it a lot there, where, you know, the community is feeling like, well, we're not being represented well, and as well as in northeast Portland, where there's a large black community that is not being, not being well represented. So, the county can do a lot more with creating more with creating culturally specific housing and more services. We need to do more to address the immigrant population that moves here and providing more English as a second language, more translators. You know, that's a very, very large barrier. And some, these things tend to be geographically specific. So, we can do more. And I think it may just mean partnerships and shifting and really kind of focusing and engaging more communities in the conversation to really figure out where is it that we most have need and what can we be doing differently to address those needs.
Mr. Reader?
I think the county has a duty to direct its resources to people most in need and to equitably consider and engage with community members around identifying needs. I think we need to look carefully at how equitably we are investing services. In some areas, it's not very equitable, like transportation investments, where we're investing much more in the inner city and the suburbs. And we need to invest more in East County. We need to build sidewalks. We need to do other pieces to, to provide the transportation infrastructure that's needed. I've, I'm currently engaged in, in developing a community health improvement plan for the county with many community partners. We're identifying, we're, we're engaging communities through forums, through stakeholder interviews, through a variety of different practices to say, how is a community, do we truly address disparities and geographic differences, cultural differences, so that we can best improve the health of everyone in the county? And as Commissioner, I hope to take those ideas, those community-driven solutions to improve health and make that a priority at the county. Thank you.
Ms. Myron?
Thank you. I also agree with Mel in terms of community-driven solutions. I believe that we need to engage with the people most affected and actually listen. We also need to gather evidence and make sure that there's accountability. So, we're not just saying, oh, we have to invest in these areas, but we don't know where that money actually is going or what it's doing. What I said earlier about using our limited resources to the best effect, this is where it comes into play. And we need to be sure that there's transparency where the funds are going so that, once we have that community engagement and know really what we need to do, ensure that our resources are effectively going to make that happen.
And Mr. Soderback?
You know, we, we tend to chase the poor people around town here. The first, we got urban renewal money out the South Auditorium site. And the only thing, people lived in that area. So, we tore their houses down and ran them out of there. And they ended up in Northwest Portland. Well, then we got the Pearl and other things. So, we ran them out of there. And we also had the, on Union Avenue problem. Now, we have been looking around and see, where are they at now? Well, they call it the numbers now. They're out at 120th, 130th, out where this is being taped at. And that's what we seem to do. I understand the question, that it was disparity. And that's, we, we, we do not, on, on one hand, we got a structured society that says the poor are here, the middle are here, and the rich are here. But how about a classless society?
Mr. Zimmerman?
Yeah, I think more so than anybody, when we're talking about where poverty has moved in this community, having been the person who's represented the, the county as the Chief of Staff for District Four, which is the, our eastern cities all the way down the gorge, I certainly have a, a good understanding of that. We have moved into the east school districts, more sun schools, more school-based health centers, more dental clinics, because we recognize that those families in those areas need more access to those services and that those keep students in school and they keep them healthy. And that's important. And it's important that we, that we make capital investments and program investments when we're talking about these, these types of items. It's also important for us to recognize our role. And the county's role in, in the cities is, is not the transportation role, but it is the service role. And we have to keep our eye on that. So, we, we talk about equitable services coming to East County where much of our poverty is at. We continue to improve our, our law enforcement and public safety, which is important because the county sheriff has a, a much more of a, a focus on community policing. And that's something that East County gets to understand now with our school-based resource officers. These are all types of programs that I've worked on at the county. And that's the kind of approach I'm going to bring as the District One Commissioner because I think it's important for the Downtown Portland Commissioner to also understand what the whole county is experiencing.
Thank you. We'll turn now to questions from the audience. And Mr. Zimmerman, you're going to start us with this one, which is, what distinguishes you from the other candidates for this office?
I think the, the most distinguishing piece here is, a lot of us agree on, on the primary issues. We have some different approaches. The real difference and what distinguishes me is my ability to turn ideas and public policy into something that actually makes a difference on the ground. And the reason I have that experience is, is in my role I, I've currently been serving in for, for several years. Knowing how the county uses its budget to affect how our health department is going to do its work, how our law enforcement is going to do its work, how we're going to find programs to increase equity in our jail system, and where are we going to expand health-based centers. Those are the types of things you have to have an understanding for how public policy works. And that's the experience that I have. And that's why I've written programs like crisis intervention training for our first responders for mentally ill situations and cleanups in, in some of our recreational areas that have been lost to the public. And we've had good outcomes and good results because of knowing how public policy is developed.
Mr. Soderback?
Well, what I, what I bring to this is years and years of perspective of the community and what community goals have been, where they've failed. I've had, I've been a supervisor or a manager all my adult life. I now own a business that was started in 1971. It's been in continuous business since then. I would like to, I had put 30 years in the merchant marine, ship captain, and I, I was all set to retire. And that's something you can do three or four times. So, that's, it's the experience with, of management. It's not something you go to school and learn, like Hilton or the Hilton Hotels. He wouldn't hire anybody off, that went to the college and had, had a college man, our hotel management course. He says, you learn it on the job. So, that's, that's what I would bring to the job.
Ms. Childs?
So, I, your question was what separates me from the other candidates, I believe. You know, as it relates to budgeting and working with people, I'm a mom. I'm a working mom of two, and I'm a small business owner. I work for myself. Every day, I am budgeting, just like every family budgets. I budget. And it's a very tight budget. If you've ever had to try to figure out how you're going to get two kids in daycare and go to work and be there to pick them up. And I know what it's like to budget. I know what it's like to schedule. I know what it's like to work with people. You know, I don't know if you've ever heard Suzanne Bonamici respond to like, how do you, do you use your lawyer's skills? And, in Congress, she says, no, I use my mom's skills. And that's, that's very accurate. You know, we use our mom's skills, which are very translatable to every day. And I will continue to do that. I have worked directly with the community that, that is served by the county. I've worked with seniors. I work with juveniles. And I have a very different perspective. I've worked, as a former public defender, I've worked with the people that are in custody. So, rather than having a good relationship with those who work in the jail and saying, I will, you know, because I have good relationships, I can really affect change there, I have a very different perspective because I've worked with the community. I've worked with the people that are in jail. And those are the perspectives that are really, that you need to change how things are currently going. Things are inequitable, and you can only get that by working directly with those people.
Ms. Myron?
So, I, I too will, would point to my direct experience. So, working in the emergency department, I see thousands of people and I see where our systems that should interconnect often don't. And I have used my direct frontline experience to inform work in the policy arena. So, I've been extensively involved in public health policy. But where I'm particularly impactful in that is that I do have the perspective of what the policy does on the frontline in the real world. So, for example, when Eric mentioned, you know, policy in terms of crisis intervention with law enforcement, I see where that has actually not worked. And with my work on the Community Oversight Advisory Board, looking at police use of force against people with mental illness, or the programs the county is supposed to have for people with mental health crisis, and I see how individuals literally languish in our ERs for days and weeks and sometimes months. So, I see the impact of policies directly on the frontline, and I work in the policy arena. And that is a unique perspective and experience I would bring.
Mr. Reader?
Sure. First thing that sets me apart is my deep root and connections with community leaders. I've, I've worked in the nonprofit world for 10 years, built, build significant alliances. So, I've built, helped to build the Oregon Health Equity Alliance from the ground up. I've created multiple different coalitions and relationships. And when I get to the county commission, I will seek a, a strong, community-driven approach to policy and programs. Second thing that sets me apart is my deep experience in policy. And I've been working in policy for my entire professional life of close to 20 years on different policies. I have a master's degree in food policy. I've, so I understand policy fully. And for example, one of the pieces was around the authority of the Board of Health at the county. That, that authority was never implemented until 2008, where I led the charge and, and helped to implement, use that authority for the first time. And the third thing is my focus on prevention. And Sharon mentioned her experience in the emergency room, which is important. But I've been working for 10 years on the prevention side to promote community health so that we aren't having to use as much acute care. And that perspective is going to be critical in, for the county to address some of its greatest challenges.
Thank you. And we turn to another question from the audience. And Ms. Myron, you're going to start us off. How does, I'm sorry, how can the county address the inequity, inequities in incarceration in county jails? Another 90 seconds, right?
Right. That's such a tremendous issue. And I think the first way to deal with it is by acknowledging the tremendous disparity in racial inequity and actual racism that does exist in our community and particularly bears out in our criminal justice system. We have to have open hearings rather than what happened, like with our current sheriff and kind of heading, hiding those reports. We need to address them head-on. We need to engage the communities who are affected. And we need to have open hearings, transparency, and accountability so that we can move forward. And then we need to engage the people who actually are impacted to, to look at how we can best do that.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
Certainly. We, we certainly have a, a problem with respect to how one is treated when they're in our jails and if that's equal to everybody and how they're treated. One of the things that I think is important is that no matter what policy a board or a sheriff or a DA implements, one thing that we have to remember, and this comes from my experience of, of training first frontline leaders and frontline employees, is you have to address the individual and understand that this is a human decision that is made at a, at a moment in time within our jail system. And those, those cultural misunderstandings, those biases that exist, we have to train our workforce and our corrections deputies to have the best set of tools to be able to recognize both their own biases, but also what are other ways to approach a conflict so that we're not having increased use of force against inmates of color. And, you know, Sharon said that some of our, our crisis intervention hasn't worked. And she's, I think she's speaking to the Portland Police. And I think it's important to talk about, when we talk about the county, we're talking about corrections deputies. And those crisis intervention trainings, I think, specifically have worked because you're not seeing suicides in our jails. And every single year, we are funding implements and implementing new policies, new capital changes to make our jails safer and also more equitable. And I think that we have to continue this. And I think everybody's right that this has to be a very open dialogue and not a backroom dialogue. We have to be very clear when we're not doing something the right way.
Mr. Reader?
Sure. African-Americans and blacks are six times more likely to be imprisoned than whites. Clearly, there's an issue. And the disparities happen at, essentially each step of the process. In order to address this, we need a lot of different approaches. I think training of, of correction officers, police officers, and so on, patrol officers are, are, are critical around racial bias, around working with mentally ill people, around poverty, so that we can reduce biases within our system. We should also really focus on the violent crimes and, and make sure to get that right. We also need to really, with people coming out of, of jail and prison, we need to create a plan. We need to make sure somebody has a place to live. They have the services. They have the social supports. They have the opportunity to get back into and become a productive member of society. And that's, that'll be critical. I think we should also need to really focus on prevention of, of crime through youth diversion programs, through early education, through addressing homelessness, through, through a lot of critical pieces and programs that we know save money and reduce crime.
Thank you. Ms. Childs?
So, we, we already absolutely know that treatment in the jails is, is unequal, unequal. And African-Americans are nine times more likely to be incarcerated than, than whites. So, you know, I, it's more than simply saying, oh, we need to do a bias training. Because if you've been to a bias training, it needs more than a training. It needs action. What I, what I think we really need is, yes, we absolutely do need to invest in after-school programming to ensure that we can, that we're doing whatever we can to divert someone from even entering, entering the system. And we also need to ensure that corrections officers, when somebody leaves the jail, it's like they should be given a comment card, like the same kind of thing you get at a hotel. Like, how was your stay? You should be able to fill out a comment card and provide some direct feedback, like, this is exactly what happened. And if it needs to be anonymous, then, you know, have it be anonymous. This is what happened. This is my experience. This is my experience with a particular corrections office, officer. And provide that kind of feedback to the county so they know, this is what's going on. This is who perhaps is creating some of the problems. And then go directly to the source. That does, I think we also need to ensure that corrections officers, officers are receiving trauma-informed care so they know how to properly work with the, with the people that they, that are in custody. And I think those are some of the things that we can do, that we aren't doing right now.
Thank you. Mr. Soderback?
Well, the way it works now is the police person gets on the radio and they call the dispatcher. They say, I got a white male here. The dispatcher says, bring him on in. He brings in, calls again, I got a, a black male here. Well, bring him on in. What determines who gets into jail? Well, there's a federal court order saying you, you can't lock up people disproportionately but count a color. So, if they have too many blacks in prison... So, if they have too many blacks in prison and not enough whites, they have to go out and arrest another white, put him in there, and balance up the system to this court order. Now, they wouldn't have to do that if we had jail space. If we, the people of Multnomah County, had digged down in our jeans and get up some money and get some jail space, we've got Inverness Jail, we've got plenty of beds out there, we've got a whole low-level prison there that will work just fine for this. I worked for 10 years with many people, trying to get a local facility that families don't have to be broken up and sent down to Salem. They could be, anyway, we got the jail. We need to open the debate on who's going to get locked up, how many are going to be locked up.
Thank you. We turn now to the closing section of our forum, and that's a one-minute closing statement. Mr. Zimmerman, you start us off.
Okay. Well, I am very proud in this race to be the candidate who's been endorsed by every single union that has endorsed in this race. That's something that I think, coming from a workforce and being someone who cares about families who are struggling in our community, that's the kind of endorsement that I'm proud to have. I'm also proud that the Oregonians said that not only am I the best option for my constituents, but also of the county as a whole, and that's the kind of campaign that I've been running it, because having an understanding of the county business as a whole is the best way that we can take care of and be good stewards of the public's tax money, of the vulnerable population who needs to make sure that we aren't cutting services in a couple of years because we irresponsibly expanded in the wrong places today. These are the reasons that I'm running, because I think I've got that eye on the budget to be the person to be able to take care of our folks in the county and also have a sense of responsibility to our public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reader.
Sure. I believe the county can be bolder. I think we can be more progressive. I think instead of just focusing and thinking of the county as delivering services, we need to think about planning for the future, about setting policy and setting health policy, being an authority in community health. I think we need to invest in the critical strategies upfront that we know works around addressing homelessness, around coordination of care, around investing in early childhood education. I think these are the investments we need to make for a healthy future. And I think the county can better address issues like air quality by saying, this is very much within our jurisdiction as an authority focusing on health. I will bring a community voice to the commission. I will bring smart ideas about policy, and I will bring experience around health equity, public health, and environmental conservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Childs.
So, I'm running for this race because I care about the same things you care about. I have, I've worked with seniors, and we have a lot of seniors that are in their home that are hoarders, and they need mental health care, and so it means the county needs to shift how we deliver mental health services and health services, period. Rather than wait for somebody to come to the clinic, we need to go to where the care is most needed. Also, with regards to equity, you know, I can't let the fact that somebody would suggest that we need more jails, that is, I completely disagree. That's the last thing we need, is more jails. I think we need to invest in youth to ensure that we don't have high recidivism rates, and we do whatever we can to ensure that whatever services the county is delivering, that they are being delivered equitably. We all need to be able to access the county, and we all need to be able to feel like we can access the county. So, I'm running because I care about these things, just like you do.
Thank you. Mr. Soderback.
The biggest thing that the county will be confronted with is a matter of money. All these things are great programs. They all cost money. We're, as we say in the emergency, two-blocked on the property tax. We tried an income tax, and nobody paid it, and the sales tax is still an option. So, we have ways of raising money, but we're going to build a high-rise, we're going to build, the bridge budget is, for the next 20 years, is over a billion dollars. All these things cost money. Now, we're going to have to have more money just to get the basics, and that's what the county commission is going to have to do. They're going to have to go out, and they're going to have to sell to people like me, to people like you, the need for all these things.
Thank you. Ms. Myron.
Thank you. So, I do have a strong healthcare background and a passion for dealing with issues of mental healthcare, but I have a much broader background. I was a lawyer. I worked in children's advocacy. I've worked in public safety. I'm a mom, and I have a broad background to bring to the county and inform policy decisions. In terms of the policy work I've done, based on my direct experience, it is at the preventive level, so that I can help prevent people from having to come to the ER, which is, like I said, the most expensive and ineffective place to deal with those problems. So, that's what I would bring to the county. I am very good at engaging and forging partnerships and collaborations, sort of a hallmark of how I work with people, and I've been endorsed by the county chair, Deborah Cifori, who I would work with in our Home for Everyone program and support, and Congressman Earl Blumenauer, and the one pro-choice organization which is endorsed in this race. Thank you.
Thank you. And this concludes the League of Women Voters Forum for Candidates for Multnomah County Commissioner, District One. We thank each of the candidates for participating and, in fact, for running. You're saying something about our democracy. And thanks also to all our timekeepers and other volunteers who made tonight possible. Please check our website, l w v p d x dot org, to view all of our forums on demand and for replay dates, times, and channels for local access cable TV. Pick up a printed copy of the League of Women Voters Voters Guide at your local library, at the elections office, or at a New Seasons Market. Online, you can check vote411.org for a guide to your personal ballot. Election Day is May 17. As in all Oregon elections, you will receive, or as I have today, my own mail-in ballot. They must be mailed back early or delivered to an official drop-off site anywhere in Oregon no later than 8:00 PM on May 17, and postmarks do not count. So, thank you for watching. Please be an informed voter. Have these conversations about the issues with your friends and families, and remember that your vote counts.